I think the one is it's December 3rd and the Planning Board, Walter Planning Board meeting. And I believe the first matter before us is Kevin and Sylvia Rodden. They're getting a conditional use permit. Would you like to approach them? So it's a public hearing on this, so please go ahead.
Okay, Tom, what we're here for is basically we've already established a permit for the...
For the record.
My name is Daniel, and I'm going to be the general contractor on the job.
Okay.
And this is...
I'm Sylvia Rodden, Kevin is traveling.
And what we're here for, we've already established that we've got the building permit. We're looking to get a conditional use permit for an apartment that's going to be installed in the lower half of this building. The reason for the apartment is at some point either Sylvia's mother, she's getting older, she may be using the apartment, or her brother who has some hard times and stuff like that, he may be intended by using the building. Otherwise than that, they don't plan on having anybody else using it.
We've met all the qualifications we've told him as far as the size of what the unit can be. And everything has to be done, so we've gone with everything but him. So I'm just here to see, make sure we can get this thing through.
Okay, great. Thank you. Tom, any comments?
Just backing up what Dan said, went through pretty great detail with Kevin, and he submitted all the answers to the accessory building needs required in the zoning ordinance. And I think in very great detail, I don't really have any issue, I don't think there's a problem.
Okay. Any members of the board like to comment on the application? No? Okay, alright. Or any members of the public like to comment on the application? Okay. So would it be appropriate for somebody to motion to approve it?
You should open a public hearing.
What's that?
You should open a public hearing.
Have to open a public hearing? So, I thought I'd done that, but... So going to open a public hearing, is there any members of the public that would like to comment? The opposing? Alright. Seeing that, I'm going to close the public hearing. So, I think at this point it might be appropriate to entertain a motion to approve. Alright, we'll see your second. Alright, all in favor to say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Alright, let's have it.
That's it. Yes, I have the building permit. The rest have been there. I'll process it and let you guys know.
Yeah, great. Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Everybody go home now, guys.
Thank you, everybody.
So next is approval of minutes. Do you ever get a chance to read the minutes? Want to read comments or questions?
Tom did make one comment about, she emailed me about separating Tom, Michelle, and I into a staff, which I did to the minute, so they are updated to reflect that. And I'll just continue to keep that going forward.
Okay. Alright, great. Okay, so we need to make another motion to approve of it. Your second?
Second.
Alright, all in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes have been approved, so is there any correspondence?
No.
Okay, no correspondence. Alright. So the next matter is proposed amendments to the Rollins for zoning ordinance. And I have to say, I'm surprised there's little here in terms of the recent meeting. But, so again, because I have trouble getting this through my mind, what is the timeframe for getting proposed amendments?
I just checked on that today. We have to have, assuming that we just have one public hearing and there's no reason, you know, assuming we only have one public hearing, we have to notice it by January 1st and we have to have it by January 13th.
Okay. And when do we need to propose, we have to notice it? And then when do these proposed amendments have to be submitted for the public?
We should have final language to present for that public hearing so that people know exactly what the proposed changes will be.
Okay.
He said January, so we have this meeting.
So you can have the, so my suggestion would be to have the public hearing attached to the January meeting, but that would still require another meeting to say that yes, we agree about the following potential revisions and the language about them. Or we can use the January meeting in that way and have another meeting shortly after the January meeting to say, to have the public hearing.
Do you know any thoughts on proposed amendments?
I asked Tom to think about that.
Yeah. One of the other ones that we did come up with that we forgot to mention last week, last month, is junkyards. We don't have anything in the ordinance, the regulation I've been, Carol and I have been in contact with legal in Cogger, and they recommended rather than have a standalone ordinance, have it as a section in the zoning ordinance. So that's going to be a brand new section that will come in for you.
Okay. We also, do we also have to define pork chop lots?
Yes.
There was, there was a number of, yes, we reviewed, at the last meeting we mentioned some. So yes, defined pork chop lots is definitely one.
And I think Michelle sent some stuff that we were...
She did. So I'll work with Tom and we need to make sure we get all of our topics agreed upon and then Tom and I can work on sending you all language for consideration.
Does language have to work before legal or anything like that if we're imposing something?
It depends how, oh, what requires a building permit. It depends on what it is we're revising, but the short answer is no, I don't think so. The zoning ordinance dictates what the town requires one get a building permit for. And it is burdensome, I would say, to property owners. It's more comprehensive than most other towns are. So Tom and I are looking over that and I've asked Tom to come up with more concise language that eliminates hating, for example.
But there's language out there we could borrow from other, or there's just standards out there as far as the verbiage. It's industry standards pertaining to these subjects.
Generally speaking, yes, but sometimes we're like, Rollins forget a little more specifics. But we can use, you know, other ordinances as examples, but it's not really, it's not really a boilerplate thing.
We'd have to tailor it to a specific for our town.
Right, that's what it's all about. Right, we can look at lots of examples, but there is no one guiding light.
But if we're using verbiage that's out there, chances are it's compliant.
Well, right, it's just, it's more about, why would we require a permit or not require a permit for X? It's more of those kinds of, you know...
It's very, isn't just language, like...
Right, like that's the heavier lift is to think about, you know...
The topics that we need to address.
Right, because for some reasons you want them to make sure that these things meet code for safety. But then, there's also fees, you know, do we want them for no other reason than for fees? But the other thing is that building permits inform assessing. That if you replace your roof, then your house now has a new roof and that would affect in some way, even if only slightly, the value of the home. So, you know, but at the same time not to be burdensome to property owners that every time they rent their room, they would need a building permit.
And we hit on some good topics in our past meetings that it's got to be, like minutes wise, that we've had some big conversations about some of the things we want to modify for this time of year. I remember the pork chop lots, those are the ones we wanted in the building permits.
So if any of you, those are, those are the three.
We need to update the applications.
That's, that's a, yes, but I don't...
We need to figure out whether that means, what level of approval we would get to update those.
That's a really good...
So our applications, like...
Conditional use permit application form, forms.
Yeah, like all the ZVA forms, the forms for this, like, they have like different requirements, like outdated requirements, but...
And make sure we're consistent across applications.
I mean, that should be, it would be a straight attack, right?
I would think so, except when they may not, when you may have a conflict, like...
Well, so I approached Charlie Putnam, who's the chair of the ZVA, about updating them because there's inconsistencies, and he said, he was like not willing to just have it be administrative.
Well, so it's the correcting of inconsistencies, so how many of butters? You know, if you're going to change how many of butters, that would be in an ordinance. But right now that conflicts, so if you want to remind me about...
I have the list of all of the inconsistencies to all of the...
So then Tom and I can evaluate which ones are a zoning ordinance change and which ones can be just administrative.
Because Charlie basically was like, you know, if we're going to go by this state, this state changes standards and the forms are just outdated, but he didn't want to necessarily change them without, you know, maybe there was a reason we kept them that way or whatever, but, I mean, I think chances are it was likely just nobody did it.
Nobody paid attention.
Yeah, if we... Who has those, bring them out?
Carolyn and I have those collectively together, but I probably have them most comprehensive because I end up sending them out to applicants as requested.
Are they available to us any time?
Yep.
You would have put a folder on the drive of applications and share it?
Sure, are they?
They're on the website, aren't they?
You know, the thing is, like, it's not that, it's not that we're trying to like have them not be available to people, it's just a matter of finding the person who's going to actually download them and do all that.
Well, and it's also, I think something on the website that we're acknowledging is out of date that we want to revise, and we're always on the cusp of revising it and it never happens.
Yeah. I mean, some of the ZVA forms I've redone because they were literally typed and you had to come in and get a copy because somebody did them with a typewriter. And, you know, I tried to scan them and that doesn't scale well, so. It's just a matter of like manpower, which we're working on. It's just on the list.
So Kevin and the rest of you, is there other things that you remember us talking about and that you remember as part of a certain case that we discussed that you, you know, or you otherwise have ideas about things that should be, could be better, that we ought to look into?
Yeah, I'll go back and look at minutes, that's meeting, to refresh.
So we don't have to list the specific ideas at this meeting, we just need them, we can actually bring them up at the next meeting?
So, you know, if we have 18 ideas, we're going to have a problem because highly unlikely that we're going to have 18 warrant articles for zoning restrictions.
Sure.
So we're going to have to focus it to the most important, practical ones. So I would say, you know, at least junkyard and building permit, and maybe even pork chop lots. We can, we'll see what comes up with the other revisions, but we'll see what we...
Oh, excuse me, I just, the pork chop lot thing, that's in the subdivision regs, not in the zoning ordinance.
I thought you said, I thought it was, oh...
I thought the issue wasn't defined.
Well, it isn't defined, but where is it not defined?
It's prohibited in the subdivision regs. You cannot have pork chop lots. But it's not defined anywhere. It's not defined in the subdivision regs, subdivision, zoning, it's just not defined.
I thought it was also the zoning that we shall not have...
I'm pretty sure we had this conversation every time we brought it up, that it's in the subdivision regs.
And I really think, alright, alright, alright.
I'm pretty sure.
So, is that big?
But anyway, if that's the case, then this board has to...
This board can just define it at any time and it's not tied to March.
Doesn't have to be the zoning ordinance at all.
It doesn't?
Well, the pork chop lots, if the, you know, if, only the zoning ordinance has to go to town meeting. If we want to revise subdivision or site plan regs, then this body can do that at any time of the year.
Okay, I didn't, okay. Going back to my question, and I think you...
Didn't quite answer it.
Didn't quite answer it, because you, so again, I had to repeat the question, which is, when is the deadline for ideas?
Well, okay, so, so thank you for that. It depends on, is the January meeting going to be the public hearing date and we're going to meet in the meantime? Or is the January date going to be the date where we're going to suss it all this out and we're going to have all our language proposals and we're going to decide what we're finalizing and then we're going to have a public hearing after that, so...
I think with the holidays, the latter is, makes more sense.
I don't see us having a meeting clean out in the January meeting being the holiday, right?
Okay, so then I would say if you would add to the agenda ideas for January, then we will go through all the language revision proposals and we'll get you language ahead of time so that everybody's prepared to say what they think about things.
According to the notices that I did last year for this, we sussed out ideas in January and had the hearing.
Time-wise, that works, yes?
So that, does that work?
No. The first public hearing we have to have by January 13th. But further, we have to decide on its date because we have to, and we can do that by email if we have to do that by email, but we have to notice that by January 1st.
The date of the public hearing.
The date of the public hearing, that will happen by the 13th.
The public hearing is January 13th.
Yeah, I think, okay.
Which is similar to what you're saying, we have to set the date before the first.
Right.
So do we need, but do we need, I mean, could we set the date now?
Sure, or we could wait, it doesn't matter. We know we're going to use that meeting on, in the beginning of January.
What's, so what is the latest date that we can have that hearing?
The 13th.
Is that true?
Yes.
No, I know, I...
Because chances are, it's going to be a pretty quick meeting.
Well, right.
There's not, I mean, if we have, if we meet on a regular schedule, suss it out, meet on the second day to do the hearing.
There should be a pretty quick 10-minute thing.
And frankly, like, not all the board members are going to have to come because you don't need to, you don't need to vote on these ideas.
Oh, you have to pick a date.
January 7th is the first thing.
Oh. So, oh gosh.
On January is wide. December is not.
Isn't it safer to pick a date now as opposed to...
By all means.
We have the last time of meeting for January 1st.
So we have all the players in the room, yes.
And there's always the option of having a separate meeting as, just as a workshop to consider it, right?
Yes, you know, and then do the public hearing on the 7th when you're actually meeting.
But when do we have to decide that, to notice that?
We have to notice whatever we're doing.
Notice it 10 days before, so 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, so we need to notice it by the 28th.
And otherwise, if we, if we bend the 7th and have the public hearing, we could have, how many day, the next week? Would we do that or not?
The public hearing after the meeting, is that what you're saying?
No, because that would be the 14th, but 13th.
And we just can't meet a day early, whatever.
Well, I don't know.
So it would be better to pick the date tonight so that we can make sure we meet while we're already...
That's, that's what I was thinking, it would make sense to, that way we don't have to worry about missing that.
Yes.
Pleasure.
As much as December is really cramped, it might be easier. Like, can we not have a meeting to decide about language and what we think about things the week of the 16th?
16th.
16th, oh, December.
December. I just want to revisit that idea because January is, there's not a lot of, you know, you've got a week of a holiday, you know?
Doing them the first Tuesdays at the 7th, I mean, just our regular meetings on the, you know, quarter into the month.
I could do, yeah, which I can make, I can do the 19th, the Thursday.
Thursday the 19th.
Anybody else, Thursday 19th?
I think I can, I didn't think, to bring my, I don't know why I couldn't.
I think so, but not really, I'm not sure, but I can verify.
Sure.
Can we earlier?
If we earlier, alright.
Sue, how about you?
Yeah, I'll say the 19th. I'll double check at home, but I'm quite sure it's, 19th is okay.
Yeah, I mean, it would be relatively...
It should be relatively brief, there's no cases, it's just...
So we're going to have a 13th, huh?
Yeah.
Okay, sure.
Okay, fantastic, and then we'll...
And then we still, was it the public hearing on?
For the day of the meeting, the 7th.
The 7th.
Yeah, so that's 7th.
So the other things I just wanted to refresh, wasn't there a discussion before the, about site plans expiring at some point?
About what?
Site plans.
Yeah, we didn't...
Site plans, having an expiration date?
Yes.
And don't, I think we need to adopt, don't we have to adopt a ordinance on that, or if we want to do that?
I think, isn't it, it aren't in there? And if not, it's, I know there's a saying, that if, we're saying that if you haven't approved site plan, you do nothing, then I'm pretty sure it expires in four years.
And I think we wanted to move that up.
I remember, I remember seeing some peaceful association email or something about that and it's, now it's six months ago, but I thought that was a...
I've looked through their, their articles and stuff and see.
But also I think we need to be, Kevin, I'm pretty sure we can't be more strict than the state, can we?
I think that's true. I guess I thought that whatever it was, we had the opportunity to tighten it up and I can't say any more specificity than that, but...
We'll look.
We'll, we'll, we'll look.
And I'm going to go back to one of my favorites is impact fees. Now, we have an ordinance, you said, and I think I heard you say...
Well, it's in the ordinance, yes, that we can.
It's in the zoning ordinance.
It is that we can, but we don't have it, so what will we need to do?
It's up, it's up to the planning board to come up with the fees, but it's, I think what we need to determine is, is it going to be, is there going to be sufficient development to justify it? Because it's a fairly complicated issue. I mean, we have to have separate accounts in banks, like one for schools, one for recreation, one for police, one for fire. If it's not spent in like six years, I think, then it has to be refunded.
So you have to keep track of that. We have to have like a process.
Administration piece of it, a big piece of it.
So my first question then is, so is that something that has to be voted on? Or like the pork chop lots, is that something we can just decide?
The, let me think.
So it's in the zoning ordinance, but we don't need to change the zoning ordinance, we just need...
I think the fee schedule is in the subdivision, or should be in subdivision regs.
So again, from my, forgive me.
We should probably check that to see, point taken, like, I don't know if we can just adopt a fee, a fee structure for something.
There's some, there's certainly, because we, I mean, we have to justify it. You know, we have to say because of the level of development, we need this extra money in order to increase the size of the school or...
So for, right, which means that you have to prove that your school is already at capacity and can't handle the development of 200 extra homes. So, you know, we have a lot of learning to do, or I have a lot of learning to do about how that would work because, you know, for example, with the school, we would have to stay in touch with them annually to see how enrollment's going and how much more room they have and...
Doesn't even tie into your public utilities as well as far as your fire and your police. You have to show how that's going to impact what your current status is as far as costs and how they're going to develop. And population is going to affect that proportionately.
Exactly.
So that was the administrative piece, I mean, I agree that's, that would make a person very busy.
Well, it's tough and it would make us very busy, but the other side of that is, we have some huge swaths of land that are not protected. And, you know, one of them's 270 acres.
And isn't that the issue that either we plan for it ahead of time or then it happens and we're...
It's too late, yes.
It's too late, so...
From what we say in these meetings, you know, a lot of times how we find out who pulls, I need no definitions is because they come to light. There's no definition for pork chop lots.
Right.
So, I think we should look at that as, whether we have to, what the mechanisms are for putting a fee schedule in place?
Because whether we have the authority to put a fee structure in place. And Tom, if you can see if, what you can find in writing from another community about how you prove the impact, and any other forms or regs about keeping track of it?
Yeah, okay.
Yep, thank you. Because I'd like to get done talking about it and either decide that we're doing it or that it doesn't make sense because we keep bringing it up and we keep not really deciding that it's a good idea or not, so...
In the past said, we really need them, and then we get a five block subdivision. You know, it's just, it seems to be happening more and more with what's happening. It is developing around us, you know, when you look what's happened with the building and, you know, gagging and all subdivision. I mean, these are happening.
So if somebody explains to me an impact fee, tell me what that is. It would be a separate fee or an above the permit to you.
Who's paying the fee?
Oh, the developer.
The developer.
Which of course the cost will be passed on to the other consumer, which would be the homeowner, but you establish, however we justify it, we establish a dollar amount for the school impact, and we don't have to do all of that. We can just say school and, and fire, for instance. But there's school, fire, public, recreation, and police.
Is this only for subdivisionals or for individual houses?
Oh, it'd be for individual houses. If you had, if you had a lot somewhere, like the gentleman here, if we had impact fees, then they would have to pay it.
They would have to pay it.
So it's not just for big developments, if you implement them, you implement them for everybody, for all the...
Okay, I didn't know if there was like a guideline for that, or just...
We had to pay, we built a house in Dover and we had to pay an impact fee.
Yes, you did.
Someone's a little bitter about it.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Most people are, but it...
At least we had somebody at school.
It's over though. I have, I mean, people complain all the time, but it doesn't stop the development. It's, you know, I mean, if we had it, if the town had it, you know, 270 acre parcel, someone would come in and complain about it, but, you know, they have to pay it before a certificate of occupancy is issued for any particular property. But that's going to be factored into the purchase price of the home, so, you know, it's going to be a trickle down thing, but in Dover, anyway, I can tell you, or Portwood and Rock, it hasn't stopped development.
Well, it's, and I'm not saying it, the purpose of this is to stop development so much as to not burden the town. Like, for instance, I think that a lot of these bigger towns are, they have more resources and they're more have the curve than we are. So for instance, looking at Dover's page, so Dover, for a single residence, the impact fees are as follows, 1326 recreation fees, 325 police, 615 fire, $6,629 schools, total impact fees are $8,895. If you, apartments, four plus units, it seems less, but mostly it's because per unit, 872, 279, 447, 3303, 4601, the same thing, so...
But that, that's exactly, it goes to the impact, you know, an apartment would have less chance of having children than say a three bedroom home, so that, it's all consistent with that, but that has to be all established.
Right.
With that, yeah, with that determination.
But then you have to, but then, you have to keep track of whether or not that impact was realized or not, because if the impact wasn't realized, then you have to return the funds after this.
Right, I think it's after six years, yeah.
That's pretty tricky all the way around.
Oh, yeah.
Who keeps track, who keeps track of those numbers?
Exactly.
I mean, is it at the department?
In, yes, in.
In a place where you have staff.
Exactly, yeah, there's.
Is there somebody that does that, just, that's what they do all day long?
Sure, well, that's a lot of what they do.
It funds the positions, doesn't it?
Yes.
And it's up to this board to decide what that impact fee will be?
Once, based on a bunch of input, yes.
Oh, yeah, I understand.
Yeah, sure, but, yeah, I'm pretty sure, I'll make sure, but, because as Caroline said, it's already in the ordinance, the zoning ordinance, that we can do it.
We can do it, but we just don't know what we're charging right now.
Right, right.
We haven't sent anything, we don't have to charge you anything, because it's in the ordinance, but we haven't sent any fees, established any.
So it would be really a punch in the gut, if somebody, you know, all of a sudden we said, oh, we have impact fees now, I mean, it would be a shock to a lot of people, probably.
Well, there aren't any new construction applications.
But say I had a new construction, I've been living here for a long time, I decided I'm gonna add on.
Well, it's only for new dwelling units, it's not for.
Oh, just new stuff.
Yeah, it's not for putting a deck on here, yeah, it's for increasing living space, because that's what increases the demand for services.
And see, the other side of the ordinance is, and I'm not saying that the answer, the side is, you don't have impact fees, someone comes in and puts a 200 home development, there's no impact fees, so you and I is currently existing homeowners just pays that through an increase, the increase in town services required by that.
Yes.
We pay for that, instead of the developer paying for it.
Yeah, I understand. The impact fees are kind of like building permit fees, it's a user fee, whoever, yeah, whoever does it, then they have to, like joining our club. Yeah, right, pretty much.
But we're missing the whole point of, the benefit of them is that now that it's money that can be used.
Yeah.
Boarding's fire trucks and these, you know, that wants to plan about what we have to buy, you know, but it all, you know, transparent everything, it'll all have to be carefully calculated and dispersed, I mean, tracked, but, I mean, we could be missing a huge boat there, you know?
Well, because we've got these big parcels that, you know, one of them's up for sale, but any number of other ones could potentially at any time go up for sale.
Of course, the other thing could be, do a proposed zoning, not if we want to, do a proposed zoning change to, like say, increase the acreage for a house in that particular zoning district, before.
Well, so that negates the benefit, if you believe it's a benefit of the cluster subdivision, which sets land aside, so, you know, you keep open space as part of a subdivision, everybody can benefit from the fact that that space stays open, but it allows for smaller lots, so.
Presuming they come in for an open space subdivision, but if it's a conventional subdivision.
We can't force a cluster subdivision.
No, I don't think we can, nor do we, nor can we require it.
Right.
So see, that's actually.
If it's in the ordinance, we can, I mean, we can, like other communities will have, if you have, say, a 10 acre lot in our 40 zone, it has to be cluster, if it's less than that, then you can do cluster or conventional, but it's almost always to the developer's benefit to do the cluster anyway, because the infrastructure, infrastructure costs are reduced, you know, fewer roads and drainage.
More houses per, per infrastructure.
But what Tom has brought up is something, you know, I sort of think in the back of my mind, just in the very initial stages, is, you know, we have countryside residential, maybe we have scenic countryside, with much larger minimum lots, and I'd frankly like to talk about that in the next meeting.
Well, it's all on which side of the fence you're on, about, you know, we have a shortage of affordable housing in the region, which means that industry is having trouble finding employees, because employees can't find affordable places to live, so that's kind of a not in my backyard approach, you know, land is finite, which means that land values are always going to go up, if you make lots really large, then you minimize the overall development potential, we can do that, but are we, you know, I guess there's no right or wrong answer to that, it's all, I think, personal values and in what kind of place we want to live in, you know, the cluster subdivision is nice because it maintains open land, but you're also getting a lot more density, but the density provides for more people to have housing, but we don't, I mean, I guess individually we don't have an obligation to care, but, you know, we are part of a region that is having problems with housing, so, you know, I'm not trying to push values one way or the other about it, but it's an interesting, it's an interesting point.
And I was just, and I think I referenced about things that very early on, I mean, the other thing is that we don't have, we're not a town like Newington that has giant industry that can pay for.
Right, subsidize everything, yeah.
You know, I don't know.
And housing will always be a burden. But this town doesn't even, doesn't seem to really want commercial or industrial either, it just sort of wants to maintain it, maintain life the way it is, but it's never going to stay the way it is, because those property owners have the right to do what they want with those properties, so, you know, it's an interesting conundrum, you can't really zone a district no longer developable, you know, or.
Didn't suggest that.
Well, no, 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 I didn't mean to suggest that you were, but, you know, I think, you know, I guess what I'm trying to say is, you know, there's, everybody in town, I think, would have a different approach, and, you know, is somewhere else on the spectrum about the answer to this, because it's a conundrum, because there's no easy or correct answer.
Well, the town can buy that parcel, the town can buy that parcel and dedicate it as park.
Well, right, but the question is, so, you know, the people, do they want, you know, do they want to put their money where their values are, that's really what it comes down to, we want it to stay the way it is, but do you want it to stay the way it is enough that you're willing to pay for, to buy those people out?
Exactly.
And the answer to that is likely no. So then what?
And if we had impact fees, could that help fund that or not?
It would help fund the impact for, you know, schools, fire, police.
Put open space, does it help fund open space?
Oh, no, 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 I don't know, it's for those specific uses, I mean, in Dover we have, it's a huge mistake, we started doing transfer of development rights so that people could buy the development right of a lot, leave that lot vacant, and increase the parcel in their subdivision, but, and that money can go into the conservation district for the purpose of purchasing land that we, you know, dedicate for conservation, so in theory it's a great idea, but it's, it needs some revision.
So that's sort of like a carbon credit kind of deal you're saying, where you could, like for instance, the condos that are kind of tightly packed together beyond the Toyota dealership, is that, is that part of that, where they trade, it got very incredible density and they got that by keeping open space someplace else?
Right, right, they pay, they pay their money, they pay, you know, X number of dollars per unit, and then that money goes into an account that then can purchase land, you know, for the city to own, and dedicate it just as recreation or open space or conservation land or whatever, it works.
And that's done via an ordinance?
Yes, yeah.
And what's that ordinance called or referred to?
Well, it's in the zoning ordinance, it's transfer development rights.
Transfer development rights.
Yeah, TDR, it's for, it's a short term, but it's transfer of development rights. But that's another thing, we had to go through this whole process and procedure of establishing, you know, what the dollar amount is going to be, it was quite a project.
I have to ask, say we're, you know, we are on Pine Crest Lane, but I know that the property behind us is protected land, how did it become protected land?
That's a great question, I don't know.
I mean, but at the same time, our street is urban residential, I find it kind of contradictory, but, but, beyond that, urban residential with protected land there.
Well, because the zone for Pine Crest and Cowan, it's a teeny little zone of urban residential that butts commercial, that protected land is actually in a commercial zone.
It could be wetlands, it could be.
And it is pretty wet.
Yeah, likely it's wetlands, which is why it's protected.
And that's often why land is protected, because somebody went in and looked at developing it or thought about it, and then said, oh, it's wet, and then.
Or they did the development and then they donated it, put the land in cultivation to protect it. Because they can't use it anyways.
That's not so, yeah, Tom, give a knock on the operation.
That's kind of cynical explanation of it, but.
Yeah.
All right, I wonder if we have a lot of things that you want, and thank everyone for the patience tonight, I just, I think that unfortunately, if we don't think about things, then things are just going to happen, and maybe it's okay for things to just happen.
You're right, but, so one more point about the five acres, personally I love the five acre, you know, like I think, I think it's more aligned with what people want, which is more open space, I think people tend to not like the cluster subdivision, even though it allows for open space, but I don't know, because I'm just one person, and so that reminded me about the master plan, and I would be hesitant to suggest that we do any kind of revision to zoning that really changes its use for its potential for development without revisiting or re-adopting, revising that section of the master plan, the master plan's entirely out of date, but, but whatever we do for zoning ordinance revisions really ought to reflect what's in the master plan, because the master plan is supposed to reflect what the people in the community want, want roll for it to be.
Is that a legal requirement?
We are legally required to have a master plan and keep it up to date, it has some minimum number of chapters, and then it has optional chapters.
What I'm saying is that we don't have to only enact zoning ordinances or proposed changes that are consistent with the master plan.
I don't know that it would be illegal to do so, but I'm wondering why you wouldn't, I mean, you know, like, they're supposed to be congruent, the master plan, you know, I think that's the intention of the master plan and why we're, you know, required to have one, is because all the bodies in town are supposed to consult it to be sure, it's kind of like a check and balance to make sure that all the bodies, all the boards and committees are respecting the view of the residents, because that's the document that says this is what the residents want.
It's a guidance document, essentially, that says how the town wants to go, and then the other, the ordinances are revised accordingly.
And I'm not suggesting that we shouldn't update the master plan, what I'm reacting to is, what I get is the idea of what's, for lack of a better phrase, kick the can down the road, I don't want to kick the can down the road, because, I mean, we've already got, we're not going to squeeze in changes to the master plan between now and.
Sure.
January 7th or whatever, and.
Right, so the other thing is, you can propose a change, and we can consider it, and we can consider whether or not that change varies greatly from the existing master plan, which is out of date.
Where is it asked by, by the way, is it on the website?
No, it's not, it is a, it is a, we have one single paper copy, and I keep meaning to try to scan the master plan, I apologize.
What happens if it got thrown away by accident, I guess we'd be in big trouble, huh?
Yes.
I have some chapters.
She, she, yeah.
Isn't it an ongoing kind of, I mean, the master plan is always being updated, isn't it?
Well, I mean, usually it's updated on the schedule, like certain chapters get updated, and then X years later, X chapters get, I mean.
But it's ongoing.
Yeah, well, it can be ongoing, that's the more financially level way to do it, but you can also, like, do it once, and then leave it alone, and then do it entirely again, it's just more manageable if you break it up and keep at it.
Let's start from scratch, certainly.
Well, starting from scratch, right, but I'll, yeah, but also, you can, I think if you have, you know, a certain number of chapters, and every year you're revisiting one of those chapters, then it's always relatively up to date, but also, the board and the community are used to the process, oh, it's that time of year again, we have to go talk about how we feel about, you know, this other chapter of the master plan, and everybody's kind of used to the routine of it, I think, which has value.
How big is this document, the master plan?
It's in a two inch binder.
It's not that big.
It's not that big.
So are we talking 50 pages, 25 pages?
Oh, no, it's probably like 100 pages, maybe, it's bigger than the zoning ordinance, which is 100 pages, but it's not very much bigger, so maybe 120 pages.
Can we scan it in?
Yeah, I made myself a big note, I'm gonna, I will, I will get it scanned and sent to you all.
Maybe one last comment on impact fees, if you look in section 13.2 of the zoning ordinance, that's eight pages of just impact fee stuff, it talks about the methodology and all that, so it would give us more of an idea of the work required to do it, and then what we would have to do to maintain it.
Well, and is it still legal?
What?
Is it still legal, whatever's in the zoning ordinance, is there anything, like, does it require updating, or is there anything about the language as it exists that should be revised?
I guess we would have to review it to see.
Well, right, I'm just putting that out there, that I wouldn't want to just blankly accept that whatever we have is, it had to go, because it's old and never been implemented.
Well, how old could it be, the state just adopted them, I mean, allowed for the adoption of them, well, maybe longer than I think.
Well, okay, so for the five years that I've been here, they've been in the ordinance, and we haven't done anything with them, so, you know, I don't know anything about the state law, but I think they'd be fine, I don't mean to say that they're not.
Right, right, well, give us an idea anyway.
For sure.
All right, well, thank everyone for coming tonight, and they hope to sacrifice me coming again in December, December 19th, so a motion or a dress, want to make that?
Can I just give one little comment?
Sure.
The school budget public hearing is the 7th. Where the budget committee calls for the town, the school budget hearing.
Okay, so we're still within the 13th, if we, thank you, Nancy, so.
Because school decided to change it.
So, the 9th.
What about the Thursday, so we're talking about the 7th, right, the 9th, what's the 9th?
For both our public hearing and our regular planning board meeting.
Is that okay with people?
That would be fine.
What are we talking, the 9th?
Uh, January.
So the 16th of December and the 9th of January.
Nope.
Nope?
The 19th.
19, sorry.
The 19th of December and the 9th of January.
Oh, you said exactly wrong.
Sir, could you send an email out to the whole planning board so the alternate or whoever wasn't here tonight, and all of us can be reminded of those dates? Wonderful, okay.
The 9th of January.
Nice, Thursday the 9th, very good.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
All right, wait, a turn, I need a second.
All of you, say aye, aye, close, all right.